Thank you for joining us this evening, our regular scheduled council meeting of the Park City City Council on September 11th, 2018. Danielle, would you call the roll?
John Linder. George Glover. Ben Sossen.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
A core miss present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Con Howerton is going to lead in the invocation and Councilman Melvin Kerr is going to lead in the pledge if everybody please stand.
I'd invite you, if you would, join me in just a moment of silence as we remember what took place 17 years ago, the victims and the heroes as well. Just join me in a moment of silence. With me, Lord, we come before you this evening, we thank you for your goodness. Shall we look back on what took place 17 years ago and we pray for the families, Lord, that still suffer through that, even those that survived and all that. And we just ask you, Lord, to do work here. We thank you for this city, we thank you for these people that give so much, Lord, in trying to seek wisdom and guidance, Lord, to lead this city in a way that can help it to flourish and to do well. And, Lord, we just ask you to give them wisdom and grace and, Lord, just help them in a great way. We pray you'd bless them for their labors and their hard work. We do ask, Lord, do you put your hand of protection on the, on those that serve, Lord, our police and fire and all that? We thank you for them and, God, we know that so much of today's culture seems to be contrary to them and we just want to lift them up and thank you for them and just ask you to bless this meeting, Lord, that you had superintended, for all that's done. We love you in the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And Jim, I'd second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight to zero. We don't have anything for awards or presentations this evening and nobody signed up to speak at public forums, so we'll move on to staff reports and we'll start with our city administrator, Jack Whitson. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will be fairly short. I put in your packet some information that REAP is going to ask you to participate in. It has to do with setting up guidelines for economic development. This came about at the prodding of the city of Wichita. It sets out different standards. Some of them are common sense, like I shall not go into another city and try to get their businesses to come to your commi-, uh, your bus-, uh, your city. I've never done it since I've been here because I wouldn't want them to do that to us. Some of the stuff is pretty good. The one that is a little bit questionable and I believe that maybe the reason why they do that is Wichita loses a lot of their businesses to other communities. But what they want us to do is if a business comes and contacts us and wants to locate to our community, we're supposed to call the city that they're currently in and advise them that they're wanting to come to your city and give that city a chance to do whatever it takes to keep them into their city. I don't know if that's something that this council would particularly be in favor with. Also, August the first, and I put a copy of the agenda, they're going to have a meeting. They're going to discuss some of this stuff and at the end of the meeting, they're, they're wanting cities to kind of sign off on a resolution. The resolution may change from what you have in your packet and if it does, I'll get you a revised one because there was some discussion about some revisions. Lot of the cities were speaking favorable of it. Andover wasn't so much because they felt like they had, they had opportunity to get a couple of businesses and were told, you know, hey, we want to do it this route and do this and this and then all of a sudden it went to another business in Central County and not particularly them. And so I don't know if they're going to sign this resolution. Anyway, please read it because the resolution will be coming back to you, probably in real similar format that's what's in your packet. But they're going to have a meeting November 1st and the agenda's in your packet, so if you want to attend the meeting, you can. I'll get some more information as, as it goes on. The rest of the stuff I'd report to you tonight is on the agenda, so I won't take up time now.
I just want to clarify that November 1 date was the date of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Jim?
I just had one comment was that I read this pretty close and it sure had a long list of what we couldn't do and not very much about what we could do. So I, your comments are right in line with what I was thinking. I wanted to ask a lot of questions when we get into this and I really want to know what they're going to do for us because this seemed really one-sided. But I'm open-minded and I've heard about REAP and I think it's a good thing for the area. I just didn't like their little resolution. That's all I had.
Well, the city of Wichita, well, actually their city manager is the one that brought this forward to REAP and wanted REAP to adopt it. And if you're from their perspective, you'd probably like-
Yeah?
-those situations.
Okay. Not seeing any further questions for Jack. We'll move on to our Director of Public Works, Rick Norman. Rick?
Public Works report for this evening, September 11th, 2018, in our Park Department. Two weeks ago, we had overseeded here at the new facility. We'd had a lot of weeds out there. When that new grass comes in, that's going to help to choke out the weeds and there was quite a bit of that, so we look to see an improvement on that. We did have the east side of the building between the sidewalk and the parking lot rocked. Prior to that, we had to come in, notify staff, move their cars and inevitably we would throw grass up and now that we've got the rock down on that, that should help with that also. Reported last council meeting that we were in progress on the waste stations on the Grove Parks. We'd set the post and we have those attachments put on now, so those are currently have six locations for those type facilities. Street Department, September 1st, we mowed, completed a rotation of our ditches. Day prior to that, we were drying out enough, we attempted to get in then. Just as soon as we got in the ditch, we started rutting. With the weather forecast, the way that it was, we made the decision to go ahead and mow that on a Saturday and with the weather, what it was last week, it proved to be prudent. We did put our flags up for Labor Day. We have come, we've been working really hard on keeping up with the medians and arterials. The grass is so thick and high in places that our mowing has slowed down. Rain will slow down some, we'll get caught back up. Water and Sewer Department, the average work orders per day for August was 28.
Does anybody have any questions for Rick? Not seeing any. Thank you, Rick. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Ben?
Moved.
Okay. Jim? I'd second that. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight to zero. That brings us to item A on our new business, which is consider the approval of Exhibit A, B, C, and D to form a notice of a hearing of statement of cost proposed to the assessed established October 9th, 2018, 7:00 p.m. John Haas is here.
Good evening, everybody. John Haas, Ranson Financial Group out of Wichita, Kansas. And as always, it's a great day to be in Park City, especially when I have an order of fried pies to take home this evening. Anyway, Daniella tells me that on your hand, uh, agenda packets, you should have a set of documents that look like this. Excerpt minutes for the meeting. If everybody can get to that and we can kind of go through this as quickly as we can. I've always used these excerpt minutes because it's kind of the menu if I forget what I'm supposed to be doing. I just follow along with this. Anyway, what we're considering tonight is finishing up the special assessment process and final bonding for three projects as defined by resolutions that the city council had previously approved and you'll see that this is the list on the first two pages with that. If you have any specific questions about those particular projects, you'll have to ask Jack and Daniella on those. For tonight, you are going to be approving Exhibit A, the statement of final costs, B, the assessment roll, C, the notice of public hearing, and D, the form of notice of hearing and statement of cost to be assessed. If we can go ahead and go to those documents, you'll see that Exhibit A is the statement of final costs for each of the six projects. If I remember correctly, each one of those came in under budget or petition. The water project was a little bit higher than estimated, but still within the petition allotment with that. So you can always be pleased when we come in under budget. Overall, it's under budget. Exhibit B is what Daniella will assign for the assessment role certification and those are a series of tables that follow. For each one of these properties, the amount to the right, description of the property is on the left, the amount to be assessed to each property is on the right. And we'll go through in a little bit the calendar and we'll talk some more about those Then Exhibit C is a notice of public hearing, which will be published on October 9th. You'll have a public hearing where the affected property owners are invited to come and speak to the assessments given their property at that point in time. At the end of that meeting, you'll be approving an assessment ordinance. At that time, you could change the assessments to the individual property owners after you have the public hearing. That's the purpose of the public hearing. Generally, you don't increase their assessments and they generally don't ask for an increase of those assessments. If for whatever reason the city council would decide to decrease the assessment for those particular property owners, then it would become a general levy of the city. So keep that, need to keep that in mind. And then the last item is Exhibit D and city staff will be sending a letter to each one of the benefited properties with the amount of assessment. All we can rely on is the last recorded address of that. Now we just have to do the best we can with those items. So those are the documents that you're going to be approving tonight. I wanted staff to also provide you this calendar, which for a lot of us, our bifocals are going to have to work overtime for this. I think some of you are fairly new to city council, haven't been through the assessment process previously, so I kind of wanted to go through this a little bit. Again, tonight, you're approving those documents and essentially scheduling the public hearing, which will be on October 9th. And then on October 9th, you again, you'll be approving an assessment ordinance and property owners would have until November 6th to prepay those assessments, all or a portion of those. If they would rather pay those assessments upfront than pay them over a period of time, this would be the opportunity for them to do so. And it's my understanding that these assessments will be amortized over a 15-year period. If they don't prepay any of the assessments, then again, their debt will be amortized over 15 years and then if they'd like to pay that off because bonds have been issued, they have to, well, that's fine, but you have to make us, you have to make payment of all the principal and interest that's remaining and that wouldn't make sense to do that at that time. Once we know how much is prepaid for that, we finalize the bond issue on November 8th. Also, if you, at that time, if the city would happen to have any other projects they wish to be bonded, we would need to know by that date. On November 13th, we call for the sale of securities for general obligation bonds. On December 11th, we actually have the sale of the securities. We close the bond issue on around January 8th and the temporary notes are paid off on February 1st. Any questions from the council or the mayor at this time?
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Haas? See you, Nettie. Go ahead, Danielle.
Just, just as a reminder, especially for council that was not here in 2014, this is, this is the permanent financing of Prairie Hills 3 and 4 so that we took out temporary notes in 2014 to do this project and so now it is going to permanent financing. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Ben?
Right. I'm going to make a motion and then, sorry, the approval of Exhibit A, B, C, Exhibit D, the hearing set for October 9th, 2018 at 7:00 p.m.
Okay. George? Now second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Haas. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I now call item, agenda item 8B, which is case number Z 2018-01. This is for a rezoning amendment requesting a change of the zoning district from SF 20, single-family residential, to L 1, light industrial. Before we proceed, I'll ask the council members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from discussing and voting on this case because they may have conflicts of interest or particular bias in this matter.
No. Nope.
Okay. Has a clerk received any protest petitions in this case?
No, I have not.
I now ask the council members if they have all received the copies of the unapproved minutes from the Planning Commission on August 20th, 2018, which summarizes the hearing in case.
Yes.
Okay. After the zoning administrator's report, I'll ask the applicant and the public who may wish to speak on this item. I now call our zoning administrator, Jack Whitson, to provide us with a brief background report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up on the screen, you'll see kind of a greenish area. That's the site. It's approximately 52 acres. It's located north side of 61st Street, west and adjacent to the Wichita Valley Center Flood Control and a stone's throw from Seneca Street. The light blue area was the property that was notified of this transaction and had an opportunity to speak with the Planning Commission at their hearing. The current land use in the area, the purple, didn't come through here, just a second. Okay, the purple area is industrial tracks. The green are agricultural tracks. The yellow are more kind of residential and then there is a little red area south of 61st, which is commercial and it's north in auto. Okay? We'll move over to the way the property area is zoned. Everything in pink is light industrially zoned currently. The area that is speckled are properties that are single-family dwellings zoned and the area yellow, even though it's agricultural, the county had zoned it as SF 20 residential, but there's no residents living on that property. So as you can see, on three sides of the, of, well, actually, two sides of the property is already light industrial. The Planning Commission held a hearing. You should have a copy of the minutes of that hearing. I think they only had maybe one person talk and they were more concerned, they lived at the corner of Seneca and 61st Street. They were concerned about the drainage coming from the property since it's going to be light industrial. Actually, this next meeting, you'll have a plaque come before you, but you'll see there's a pond on the west side of the development that's being or will be constructed. In fact, it will help protect that property even better than what it is today because it will have a pond to accept the drainage from the north. That was discussed with that particular neighbor and they seem to be satisfied with that and wasn't necessarily opposing the industrial zoning. So after the hearing, it was unanimous to recommend to the city council passage of this ordinance changing the property from residential to light industrial usage. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
And it doesn't look like we have anybody from the public here to speak on it or the applicant's not present. So assuming that the council has received all the information they need on this, I will outline the choices provided under state statute for council action. One, by a majority vote, move to adopt the findings of fact and the recommendation by the planning committee or the Planning Commission on this case and approve the ordinance. By a two-thirds, or your second option, by a two-thirds majority of vote, move to override the Planning Commission's recommendation, describe in detail the findings of fact supporting the motion, and attach the appropriate conditions, if any, and approve the ordinance. Your third option is by a majority vote, return the recommendation by the Planning Commission for further consideration at its next regular meeting with a statement specifying the bias for the council's failure to approve or disapprove the recommendation. And the council's hands. Jim?
So we, we need to start with a motion here, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, I would move that we accept option A, which was the, sorry, I can't remember verbatim, but it was the unanimous approval to-
So, so we can't select an option, that would just be however the vote would turn out would be outlined with those, with how it would go. So if everybody approved it, then everybody approved it and we move on. If there was a breakdown in who would approve it, then that kind of outlines the other ones. It more or less is going through the options through the state statutes and the findings of fact that have already been gone through with the Planning Commission and if a council member chooses to vote against those findings of fact, they need to have a case or a bias in the findings of fact to bring back to them, should that fail. So really, all we need is a motion to approve the ordinance change from the SF 20, single-family resident, to the district to L 1, light industrial.
So that would be my motion, that we approve the ordinance changing of zoning district classifications from the SF 20, single-family residential district to the I 1, light industrial district, per the legal description, meets and bounds, legal description we've been provided.
Okay. Ben? Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Linder.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sossen.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
That is ordinance 1046-2018.
And that passes eight to zero. Thank you. That brings us to item C, which last council meeting, Tom asked us to revisit the rental housing code, so Tom, I'll let you start.
Okay. I know Doug has brought it to us before and said that we could get sued if we didn't have, if we'd left our ordinance in place and I've been a little bit confused on that because we've got one city in the state that has implemented a housing ordinance that was very similar to ours. They did it in March and it went into effect on July 1st. There are several other entities that currently have them in place, Unified Government, Wyandotte County, Kansas City has one, Overland Park has one, Independence has one, Coffeyville has one, and Lawrence has one. And we had one, but we killed it. And I look at that as a benefit to the community because it helps the renters, people renting the houses. It also helps the city by the property owners maintaining that property because the city has some governance over it. And I just don't know why we killed our ordinance. So I guess that's why I keep asking the mayor and he's brought it back to the council tonight, so I'm putting it back on Doug, I guess.
On August 9th of 2016, I presented a, an amended ordinance, an ordinance amending certain sections of the rental housing code. I did not recommend that it be repealed.
I thought you did.
I modified it to comport with a statute passed by the Kansas Legislature at that legislative session, which specifically prohibited any city or county from requiring periodic inspections as a condition of issuing a license to a rental property. We did at that point in our ordinance require such a periodic inspection every time the property was issued a renewal of its license and that was annually. In addition, I made a comment at that time that's reflected in the minutes, that there had been some lawsuits around the country in federal court finding that these rental housing ordinances that allowed inspection by the city without procuring in advance a warrant were violations of the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution as a illegal search and legal search. I may have said that if we left it as it was, we were subject to being sued, but I don't think I ever made the comment that we were going to be sued by having a rental ordinance. On August 9th of 2016, the council approved those amendments eight to zero. It appears from the minutes that at the next meeting, or two meetings later, on September 13th, 2016, there was an item of discussion of the rental housing code and the council voted seven to one to repeal it. That's where things stand.
Okay. So Tom, I think we need to break down a little bit of kind of what you're talking about. So if I remember, part of that discussion too was, and we looked into this, was most people were not paying their-
Fees?
Were their fees. So, and we looked at staff time to try to stay on top of that and realize that we kind of keep up with that. But I think one of the things- Were their fees. So, and we looked at staff time to try to stay on top of that and realize that we couldn't keep up with that. But I think one of the things you just said was that this would help tenants of a house if we had this. But by repealing that, a tenant could still call the city and let us know some type of issue with the house where somebody could come over and do an inspection of, of something. But it would require them to call us and ask us to come out and look at something. And it's not necessarily us going in. And I think the other part of that is, is just kind of the topic we've been covering lately, which is, in my eyes, let's clean Park City up and get it looking sharp. And we do have a heavily populated area of rental houses. And, you know, kind of comes back to, I think those things can be addressed through code enforcement, but it just means we need to up our game. So I guess, what do you, what do you want to see us do?
I've gone back and looked at some of the ordinances, they're all out online. Every one of them, you can go pull it up. It's like Coffeyville, they charge fifty dollars for the first house and two dollars a house every house after that. And they do inspections, but they only do it when somebody moves or when they're called in. And I thought that that's what we were looking at doing. As long as somebody lived there, we would never go in and, because I was against this to start with, because we were going to have annual inspections. And then we backed out of that and said, we will only do in there if the house changes hands or if there's a problem and we're called on it. And at the time, it was discussed that there's people that are renting houses that don't want to call and complain because they're afraid that their landlord will boot them out. And so there was, you see both sides, but I didn't want to go in and pick on somebody on rental house and go inspect it all the time. But I also wanted to take care of the people that are in there that needed some protection. And I, I just think we lost some teeth by doing away with this ordinance.
Jack reminded me too, when we have a conversation too around, had to do with the duplexes and fairly implementing this rental house agreement. I can't remember the discussion. There was something there where, Alan, Doug, you may remember too. I was thinking we had some type of conversation about some conflict in there that we were having a problem with.
The, the one I'm aware of is the, the builders of the duplexes, and they were all fairly new, didn't feel like it was justified to charge them fifty bucks to go in and do an inspection after they paid heavily for a building permit, in which case the building inspector already inspected the units. And they didn't feel like it was fair then for us to go back and charge them for another inspection after the building inspected, it already inspected. That was one part of it. I think there was something else, like you were saying, but I don't quite remember what it was, right?
Doug, do you remember?
I think there was some question. I don't think we applied this to apartment buildings, not that we have a whole lot.
That's what it was.
And the other thing was duplexes. I'm not sure that we really applied it to duplexes and we have quite a few of those. And so there was a real question about equal enforcement of our rental, rental housing ordinance.
Yeah, it was the apartments. That was the part that we got hung up on, trying to figure that out. But if I remember right too, we had two current landlords come up and complain because of the duplexes and the rental housing agreement. And then we actually went back and looked and they hadn't paid any of their fees for, for being a rental, so.
My question, is this something the council wants to look back at and, and look at what we want to do with it or does everybody just want to let it go? I think that if we went back and looked at what the other five cities are doing, maybe, and I know Kansas City, Missouri just implement, just voted within the last couple of weeks to implement the same thing.
Well, Missouri's not subject to the.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying that, but they, they modeled theirs after Kansas City, Kansas.
Well, Kansas City, Kansas may have something on the books that says they do inspections, but trust me, it's a violation of state law if they do, if they make that a, a condition of issuing a renewal. I believe there, one thing we probably didn't talk about last time is the way the statute reads. The first inspection, I think we could insist on. I think we could say, you need to license your rental properties and you need to come to us and fill out an application, pay us a fee, and we have to inspect. And I think that initial inspection probably doesn't violate the state law. I'm not so certain that it might not be problematic under federal law, but that would be a lawsuit and that may or may not be a problem. But beyond that, initial inspection, which is the real nuts and bolts of what you want. Generally, somebody's going to have things looking pretty good when they, when they make application, you go in and it's a pretty minimal standard that's applied by our code enforcement people or building inspection people, just basically compliance with the structure code. And once that's done, then under this restriction that the Kansas Legislature put on us, we can't require that anymore. In fact, they've additionally put some restrictions on what tenants can do. And that doesn't even mean that there's a rental ordinance in place, just generally in our city. A tenant who's under any eviction notice can't ask for an inspection. And a tenant who asks for an inspection by us, we can't do that inspection unless we contact the rental owner. That's, that's the, that's your legislators that have done that.
And Tom, I do think one of those that you sent to me was exactly what Doug said, where the initial one, there was an initial fee and an initial inspection, but I don't think there was follow up inspections.
I'd have to go back and read them all again. I can't remember, I looked at all of them. But my, my intent with this is, is if we didn't do anything but inspect the heat and the hot water tank and make sure there's no mold in the house and stuff like that, and if the properties kept up, we wouldn't have any other reason to be in there. But if, it's up to council. I'm bringing this back up again. I think it was a good thing and it's gone. And it's an opportunity that we need to look at or not. And so it's up to council.
Yeah, George?
While I was listening to what Doug said, apparently we don't, if someone calls and complains now, we don't act on it.
We have a couple of times, we have act on those complaints.
Well, you know, back in the nineteen eighties, late eighties, I was renting from, I won't call their name, they're a well-known renter. They rent a lot of, a lot of homes here in, in Park City and for the most part, I think they're probably pretty reputable, I don't know. But at that time, the house had one of those old sixty amp breaker boxes in it. And my wife was, her dryer, every time she'd use clothes dryer, it'd kick breaker. And to make a long story short, she kept having to take her clothes as she washed them to the dryer, to the laundromat. And I talked to the rental company about it and they blew me off, went on for a while. And finally, she was mad one day and made me mad. So I called them and said, look, you know, you either fix this problem or I'm going to call the fire department and the fire marshal and, because this is a fire hazard and, because it would really get hot. And so they, they immediately came out and put new service in the house and fixed it and then checked my rent way up. And so, you know, I, I would be all for getting this because of that. People renting from these landlords need to have some recourse when they run into something like that because they just blow them off and take their money. And I'd be all for going back on, doing what we can, protect the renter.
Okay. Ben?
Sure, if I understood what Doug was saying there, is that ultimately, we might be able to, to insist on inspection when someone first purchases a property, would that be what you were saying, possibly get?
Well, if we initiated it again, it wouldn't even be purchased, it just, anybody who had a property in the city that, that rented it, yes. I believe we could at that point do an initial inspection and not violate the state law.
But yeah, and you mentioned, in the sake of, in the same, concerning new purchases, I mean, anytime you're going through a new purchase on a home, your home's obviously going to be, or the, the buyer better be getting a decent look at that house before they're purchasing it. So it's not going to be in worse, it's not going to be in its worst condition. So as far as the rights of renters go, I know that there are several different resources available for renters. The rental league has, has resources available for renters' rights and there's a multitude of, of those resources available. So I don't know if putting something back on the books would actually, would, would do anything in that regard. They already have the ability to make those complaints and to have, again, for repetitiveness, resources available. So from my perspective, I would, I would suggest we don't take any action on this.
Okay, Tom?
I, I would just like to say that ours was modified so that everybody, when they signed up, said they got a rental property, it got inspected. The only time it was inspected after that is if somebody moved. If you lived in that house for five years, nobody ever went in there, unless you called them. And so it was only upon new renter coming in that it was inspected and they were checking for safety and mold and things like that. And by doing away with this, we don't have any, anything there unless we call, unless somebody calls us, so.
I, I don't think that's what the rental ordinance did. It was every five years. And, and there was no, if there was a tenant that moved out and a new tenant moved in, I'm not aware that there's anything in the existing ordinance.
I'd have to go back and read it, so.
Pardon me?
I would have to go back and read the whole, it's like some of these other five that I've read, I got them twisted together, so.
I, I think that, that, the, and I remember the time, and, you know, I don't think we were probably no, no better staff than we are today in the, in the code enforcement. It was difficult for code enforcement to get out and, and every five years, hit all those properties that they had to hit. But I don't recall that absent a tenant complaint or absent some other presenting matter that identified some violation of the structure code or the building code or the, or was it some sort of nuisance, moving in and out of tenants was not something that triggered our code enforcement people going out and doing any sort of inspection of rental properties.
Okay, I don't remember the five year date on it. I just remember that when they moved, that we had an opportunity to go back and look and, so I'd have to go back and look at it.
Just, just a couple of things. One, one thing I heard Tom and Ben say, just on Tom's side, I mean, you've mentioned mold a couple of times and one thing I worry about is the city comes in, does an inspection and then is basically saying, green light, you're good. But an issue like that, you can't guarantee. So I would be worried that by going through something like that, the city is now, has some type of liability because you came in and did it and you said it was good and, you know, three months later, we found out that it wasn't because something was growing on the sheet rock behind the wall in the bathroom. I would worry about that. The other thing Ben had said was just talking about buying a new property and, you know, it's, it should be getting inspected. Well, a lot of these, these properties are being bought, are being bought for cash. There are no inspections being done and, and that's just because of the, the area and the neighborhood and where those are. So there's kind of give and take on each side.
And I'm going to make one more comment and then I'll back out.
I'll go first and then back to you.
Sure. I definitely agree with that. We see that a lot in, in the line of work there that I do with those cash deals taking place. To me, again, I just don't see what it would accomplish as far as, I think it would overstretch our, our employees and our staffing and we're already having shortcomings there. And I think it's just an excess growth of government in, in the sense of intruding into the lives of these individuals when there are resources available, whether they're able to call the city and to have an inspection done, as the mayor mentioned, or even the advocacy groups that are available for them to reach out to. So I just, I, I, I'm not convinced that this is something that we need to revisit there on that, for those reasons.
Okay, Tom?
I was going to say, as far as the inspection, it's a point in time. You can have a rust hole show up and a vent pipe two months later, three months later that you don't see. So it's just a, a data point in time that that house was past inspection and gets rented. So same thing with mold. I mean, you can break a pipe and three months later, you got carpet full of mold and it's because it got wet and nobody took care of it, but it was fine when we went and looked at it, so. But if there's no intent to look at this, I'll back out of it, so. I just think it's a lost opportunity to protect our residents.
Okay. All right, so that, that item was really for discussion, so I think we had some and if, and if any point, somebody wants to bring that back, just let me know. So we'll bring, we'll go on to item D, which is the Indian's Gulfer located on sixty first street. George?
Yes, most of the people, or a lot of the people weren't on the council at this time, but the money was appropriated to repair that, to fix that problem several years ago. We appropriated the money for three different projects. Well, they spent all the money on the projects down the sixty first and I one thirty five and stuff, so, and, and down the quick trip. They told us, well, you know, we were, were told then that the next time the money's there, we'll, we'll take care of the Indian. Well, of course, we had a big catastrophe down there and the money got spent again and the Indian once again got passed over. But I, I for one, you know, I hear the mayor and other people talk about, let's beautify the city. You know, what better place to start? Because I, I can't think of any other word except ugly to describe that pile of cement, that, that horse and Indian. I, I would be open to any suggestion to improve it, but I, I would like to see that concrete taken out there and maybe a bench or a plaque designating or putting the fact that that's a, on the Osage Trail, you know. I, I see people, because I live close to there, so I, I see people stopping and they go through town and, and stop and take pictures of stuff around that Indian. And, and I'd just like to see us improve it, make it look, you know, if we're going to make the city look nice, let's, I mean, that thing's right out there and for everybody to see. And I don't think it would take that much.
You have a suggestion? And just tearing it up and put a bench?
Yeah, I'd like to see that. I, I don't know why the concrete was put there to start with, maybe Jack can help me, I don't know.
So I know one thing we talked about, because you kind of brought that up just a little bit and, Rick, do you have any answer to that question? So one of, one of my concerns was, we talked about, okay, we get a hopsaw or something and go in there and cut that back and tear that out and it's probably something our guys can take care of. My concern was how it was mounted and do we lose any stability from those sides being done? And does it need to be picked up and completely removed? So you might have got some background on that from our last.
I do, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I should apologize to Jack. Jack asked me to look into this and I didn't report back to him. We just looked at this today, so that's the reason for that. Alan and I went over and looked at that. Some of our concerns upon inspection was on the south side, how that's tied in to the curb, we couldn't tell if it was or not. On the north side, it was tied in to the sidewalk. When we got up on the pad, we did notice a small crack between the pad and the concrete and the rock structure. We could just barely see down in there and we did see a piece of rebar, which maybe six inches below that. That's typically put in about midway of the width of the pad. So I guess what that boils down to is, we don't know if that's on six inch centers, twelve inch, eighteen inch. There would be significant risk to that pad if we tried to go break the rock up.
So we really need to think about picking it up, removing it and coming up with a different way to?
It was hard to tell the extent to how that's tied in. That was put in in two thousand two and Alan didn't remember if we tied it in. There's a chance if we tied it into the curb, then you may have curb and gutter that's going to have to be removed. If it's tied into the sidewalk, then you'd have to remove a section of that to remove the rock only. There would be significant risk to the pad if we try to break the rock out.
Okay.
Is, and that's a council.
That helps gives us some direction.
take one little half a block and put $25,000 in it and a mile of street looks bad. I'm kind of in tune to what George said. Clean up what's there and get a bench out there and, and stuff, but.
But I think what we were just talking is, if we want to clean that up, we probably need to pick it up and remove it and scrape it down and either figure out, do you, we put it back in the same spot?
Or somewhere else.
Ground level, with a better footing, or, or what do we do? George, and then I'll come back to John.
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I, I, I was hoping someone would remember why all that concrete was scattered around that pad. Because I was thinking, you know, that's not a real wide pad. And I was thinking the same way you was about the stability of it. But I figured there must be a reason, but I, I don't know why it wasn't more streamlined.
All right, Jack, you want to answer that question?
Okay, the artist that created the Indian and, and the raring of the, the horse and everything pictured this, this, if you can think of some Western movie that you may have seen somewhere along the line. Indian comes up on this cliff and the horse raises up and, and that was the artist's conception, okay? And so originally, uh, we set it up there and, and on a pile of dirt. Well, my concern was, because of the closeness to the sidewalk and, and the general area, that we get erosion, then that Indian's gonna go down and fall on somebody sitting on the bench or something. And so I was a little bit concerned with that. So I said, well, we can't leave it as it is. We didn't have money to build a limestone base for it, which I think would make it look a lot better if we could put one around it. And so I said, well, let's take some concrete and let's make it irregular to look like it's rock, okay? And I told the guys, I said, and so we don't have to paint it all the time. You, let's put an additive in the concrete to give it some color. Well, it came out pink. And so, I mean, what we could do is go in there and have an artist go in, like they do at zoos and stuff, and go in and artistically make it look like it's on a, a limestone cliff. That would improve the looks of it. Now, what my recollection is, there's forks coming off of the Indian that go into the deal. And the rebar was connected to those forks to provide stability. So it, it would be a job to try to remove that without damaging the Indian. But that's, that's why it had the concrete, because I was worried that, that it was going to erode off, but the color. Well, that concrete is cracking now. It's got a big crack on the, beyond the west end of it. It's got a big crack in it, so it's cracking now. Yeah. And it might be something that we could go in, take a saw and square it up and then put a limestone wall to conceal it.
Yeah. All right, John?
Yeah, I, I can remember, I pulled up the minutes, but I also watched the meeting from back in 2013 when we decided on these projects and we voted six to two to, to not do the Indian, not to fund the project over at 61st Street and then the park in front of Subway. And I actually made the comment then that my fear was that we would do those projects and forget about the Indians. And I can remember Jack brought up art, which made me laugh, because when I came on the council, I remember saying that was one of my things, was I thought that thing looked horrible. And I was told that I don't appreciate art. So, um, which I, I will, I will say, I don't know anything about art, but I, I just wonder if, I, I kind of liked what we did with the initial plan with the median over there. And I didn't feel like it turned out very good, the, the wildflowers and all that stuff. And we ended up getting another company or some bids to have a different company come in and dress it up. And I think it turned out really nice. I mean, you know, may require, require a little bit of maintenance and weeding and stuff, but I, I think it looks really good. So I just wonder if maybe we're better off instead of taking that out or whatever, maybe we want to cover it up with some landscaping and leave the foundation of what's there, where it's at. Now, I, I'm not visualizing what the slope is and what the things are, but if it's something that we don't have to mess with the entire thing and take it out and reset it and spend a lot of money on it, maybe we can perhaps do some shrubbery and some things around it. Maybe, I know in the packet we have the artist's rendering or the, the rendering of what they were proposing to us. Maybe we can show that to them and say, you know, go with what you can do with this with three or four landscape companies, make it look nice and leave it where it's at. I'm open to moving it. I mean, we're working on some stuff here out front and over by the library. Is there a better place to put it? Maybe so.
Okay. George?
Well, I'm open to anything. I just, like I say, the thing looks ugly. And that concrete base down there is cracking. And I don't know if that's because stress from, from, from the Indian on the pad or what it is, but I don't know if that's gonna develop into a further problem or not. But if you look at it, you'll see the crack in it.
Tom?
I was gonna say, the only thing I'm struggling with is, is putting a lot of landscape there, like in the picture. And I thought that was being presented tonight. And cutting sidewalk and redoing a block of sidewalk. If we want to take what's there and document it, or I mean, redo it, then that would be different. But I don't want to get in a situation like we've got over on the berms over in, in the park where we had to go in and take stuff out because there's too much stuff and it's all growing over the sidewalk and, and this just looks like an opportunity for more work for our guys. If we want to keep it simple, rock around it and build it up and put some flowers on it and stuff, that'd be one thing. But to go in there and totally reconstruct it, I'm against it.
Yeah, the only reason that's in your packet is to show you what we looked at during that meeting.
Yeah.
And then I passed out kind of the cost. The, the reason why that didn't get put in there is because the cost was significantly higher than what we originally thought it was gonna be. Jim?
I just wanted to go on the record, George. I think that Indian, everybody, even the mayor, I, I've never got the Indian. It just doesn't make sense to me, but I'll be at risk of being the, like John, and not appreciate art, I guess. But anyway, I just wanted to say, whatever we decide to do with it, I'll be supportive of changing it. I, I'm concerned about the cost and I like the idea of doing something a little more basic and maybe not spending so much money. But I'll tell you, whatever we can do to change it, I'll, I'll back. I like the idea. We just have to understand why we pay for it.
George?
Well, you, you know, I was listening to what Tom's talking about, the, the berm and, and stuff over in, in Crow Park. And you, you know, a, a lot of people in this town, and I'm one of them, is I never go over. I never use that park. And a lot of people don't. And, and I've even had complaints about the Christmas decorations being put up there. And they say, well, that's for a fourth of the people in our town because the others either go down the interstate or other, other directions. So I, there's, there's, I'm gonna tell you, there's, I couldn't tell you how many more times there is people who drive by that Indian and they do drive down Crow Park and look at the berms. And we're spending time and money over there. And I'm one of these people, if we got the, the time and the money to fix those berms in Crow Park, then we should have the time and the money to beautify the street for, there's, there's probably thousands of people, or at least a thousand or so people, go by that thing every day. And that's just my opinion.
Eric, Ben?
Sure, I would echo what Jim and, and John said actually too about appreciation of art. I'm not there either, but I would also agree with George that it is just ugly when you drive by there. And so I would be in favor of, of something that we could use, some, some type of either re, re, restructuring of it or just doing some, some landscaping, something that could make it look palatable for people driving and, and walking by there because it, it, it just sits there by itself in the middle of a long stretch of street from the intersection where we did all the beautification to where we get to our campus here. And it just sits there by itself all, all weird. So I, I'd like to see, maybe if we can't send something out to, as John suggested, maybe some landscaping companies to give some bids to see what it costs to maybe, we don't need to do maybe what's rendered here in the packet, but at least something to, to, to make it look decent and maybe even pretty.
So I, I don't really think it's gonna benefit us all sitting here trying to talk about this tonight. I, I think it needs to be done in, in a very simplistic form. And that'd either be George lead a committee of two other council members and yourself, come up, plan, bring that back. Or just direct staff to, uh, send it out like an RFP to a couple of landscapers and see what we get back and then choose from that. And I ain't never got that thing personally. I'd like to see it uprooted and gone. It, it's completely away from the other stuff. I don't, I thought for many years that was dirt that we couldn't get grass to grow on. And, and I have never understood that thing and have always wanted to get rid of those. So I would be totally for something happening to that thing. John?
I was just gonna say what you were saying. I guess I would ask, I mean, not making a motion, but just we direct staff to develop an RFP to just, just bring us something with a plan of what that thing can do. Obviously, we don't, we're not into the $20,000 range. And I have an idea on a, on a funding source, but let's see how much it's gonna cost. And I'll see what we can do, a private funding source.
Jack?
Down by Subway, the cowboy and the cattle represents the Chisholm Trail, which runs through there. Some people think the Indian's name is Chief Capps, but they were, they were thinking about our, our ex-police chief. But actually, the Indian was there because 61st Street was Osage Trail and, and it was to identify 61st as the Osage Trail going to Seneca. If you look at the monument there, okay. So there was a purpose for the Indian to be there. And I'd like to see us put a big buffalo somewhere along the road too, but, but not on a hill of concrete, though.
Tom?
I was just gonna say, Jack didn't finish it. There were supposed to be some other parks of that that weren't bought. And so if you had the whole set, then it would look different than it does.
Ben?
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion and ask that we would have staffed it, an RFP there for some design work there on that.
Let's send out to some landscapers for, to get a concept.
To get, yes.
Okay. George?
No, second to that.
Okay. So our, our motion is we're gonna direct staff to come up with an RFP, send it out to some design landscapers to get us a couple of concepts on what we might do there. Tom?
I'm gonna vote against this because you put something out there that suggested that maybe a small team be put together to bring a plan together on what we might like to have out there, instead of just going out and grasping at air. So I'll be voting against this.
Okay, Alan?
I, I agree with Tom there. I think we need to put a committee together and see what, maybe move it or something too.
Okay. Got a motion and a second?
I have two volunteers for a committee too.
I, I'm not, I, I'll be honest with you, I'm not a landscape developer, don't know the first thing about it. So I, I, I would rather have some professionals look at it. That's what I was hoping we would get when we started this deal, was to get someone to tell us, so we have an idea of what, what they could do with it and what it would cost. I'd like to see a professional look at it because I don't know what the crack in that concrete's gonna do. I think we ought to have a professional look at that because that might be getting ready to go.
Sorry, my guy interrupted while you were doing that. Sorry about that.
I, I can only keep my fingers crossed on it. Getting ready to go somewhere. So we got a motion and a second. All of us in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that motion passes six to you. That brings us to item E, which is discuss a replacement of a maintenance shop. Jack?
That little round circle in the middle, that's what's known as a jib, jib crane, and I'll get into that here in a minute. We had originally looked at putting a three-ton hoist that would go and span the whole building, but that added 30% to the cost of the building. So we're going back with a jib crane. And for those that don't know what a jib crane is, it's basically a pole with an arm and, and the hoist rides on that arm and it can be moved around. Also, I was informed that originally I had only one restroom. I was told I had to have two restrooms, one for men and one for women. I couldn't do a combination because of ADA. So anyway, that's, it's a three bay. The, the bigger bay is on the left and for bigger equipment to drive on through. The other three bays are for trucks and police cars. And then there's different elements. There's a welding area, woodworking area, a storage area, a room for the compressors and so forth and so on. This will allow at least 20 years of growth in the maintenance department. This is what the building looks like from the outside. It's, it's not extremely purty building. It's a metal building. It'll have three, three smaller bays and then one big bay. The top one is, is the one that'd be facing the street. The other one is the backside, and then these are the two side ones. Now, we had an offer on the current building of $80,000, okay? Since then, we had another offer of $98,000 with a proposed contract. And they're in a, they want to move on it, but they also understand that we have to have time if we decide to build another building to give us that time to do that. And that, that quote is $98,000. The building has been appraised, or the same one that appraised our, our city hall, at, at $100,000. So that's real close to what the appraisal is. Now, I went out and talked to three companies to give me estimates on what they believe this building should cost. And, and I'm gonna go over that now with you. Up there, there's a, a chart. As I went along, certain things came to mind. Instead of using a hoist, we jumped back to a jib crane, had the extra bathroom. We have to hook the building up to sewer. Sewer's not real close there. So I put some money in there for a septic tank system. It might be close enough to get a sewer system in there, but maybe doubtful. Also, the lift that they need in the building is like $15,000. And looking at it, the, the cheapest deal is Lou Rebelly at $394,567. You take off $100,000 or approximately $100,000 for the other building, that'd leave us with $294,000. Now, with Lou, Lou said he would give us some land to put this on adjacent to our current facility. If you look to the right of the blue, the blue would be the building and that's the lot. That vacant lot there is what Lou Rebelly would give us. The value of that at $2 a square foot is somewhere around $54,000. But I talked him into donating that to us for tax deduction. So he would be willing to do that. To the, to the right of the gravel road going up there is our current facility, okay? So it'll all still be within the general range of each other. Trying to put this building north of the existing building is a little on the hairy side because we have several big water mains running through there. And it'd be tricky not to hit one of them or build a building on there. Now, the big question, where, where we get the money to do this, okay? We have some money in MTBE, which is our reserve and probably wouldn't want to use any of that. But the fact that we're going for general obligation bonds, this could easily be put into that issue and financed for 15 or 20 years using general obligation bond money. using general obligation bond money. So I'm bringing this to you for you to make a decision whether or not you want to look at proceeding and which way you'd like to proceed or just forget about it. But the current facility is not going to be a 20, last us 20 years. We're gonna have to do something. Whether do we have to do it today? No, we could put it off for maybe one or two years. But somewhere along the line, somebody's gonna have to deal with the expansion of that facility. And you're not going to get any cheaper than you are today. I can assure you that.
Jeff and Nolan?
You say there's no way to add on to that Sherwood building now?
No, no.
Can't put two bays to the north of that?
Well, the problem is the water lines on the north side of that. You're gonna have to remove water mains.
Well, I hear the only thing that needs to be moved is a gas line there.
No, there's water mains, huge water mains running.
Have we researched that to see how far out or?
Yeah, yeah. You could probably stick it in there, but why would you want to do that when a man's giving you free land?
Well, it looks like you're gonna have to take your vehicles off premises and drive them there too. Where most of your vehicles are here, aren't they?
What I would, what I would do, what I would do, okay, is I would move the gate, which is currently right here. I would move it up here. That's all in one facility.
And if you add it on there, would you need all them bathrooms in too and all that other stuff? I mean, I'm just trying to cut the costs there. It needs to be moved, that maintenance facility.
You're still gonna have the same cost, okay? It's still, whether you add on to it or not, you're still gonna have the same cost. You might, you might save $10,000 because you only, you don't need the restrooms. But other than that, the building is still gonna cost you.
Just adding on two bays on there is gonna cost half a million dollars?
No, you're gonna have more than two bays. You've gotta have four bays. Not two bays, four bays. Let's go back and let me show you this just a second here. Okay, let's go back here.
Well, them bays I got there at Sherwood now, you can put two cars and those would tell right now, can't you?
This is a 20-year structure, okay? What you're doing today and what you're gonna be doing 20 years from now, okay? So if you're gonna invest this kind of money into a building, I would suggest you want to make sure at least will serve your purpose for the length of the amount of time that you're financing it. That just, I think makes sense. So, follow me here, Melvin. There's one bay here, there's one bay here, there's one bay here, and then there's a large bay here to handle the road grader and the bigger equipment. Okay, so there's four bays. So you're not just adding two bays, you're adding four bays.
Now, what size are these bays?
Let me see here if I can get it up here. They're at least 12-foot wide, the three there, the first three going right to left are 12-foot, and the bigger bay is 20-foot.
And what size of bays are those down there now?
I don't know. I imagine about 12-foot.
I'll bet they're wider than that. They're a lot wider than that, aren't they?
I don't know. I've never measured.
They can put four trucks in there.
Yeah. Well, it's immaterial because if you, if you're, you might as well just stay where you're at and then let somebody else worry three or four years from now as to, and you can do that, you know, as to whether or not, as we grow, we're gonna need more room. That's, you know, one option, just keep it as it is. But if you're going to do something, it's not going to be any more cheaper than it is today five or 10 years from now. You're gonna have to face that issue because prices are going to continue to go up. But I'm bringing this to you and giving you the information. You need to make a decision. But if you're going to go the route to build one and you want to finance it, now's the time to do it because we have a bond issue that we're getting ready to start and we can include it in that bond issue.
All right.
Don't mean that you can't wait several years and try to do this later. But the buyer that wants to buy the building today isn't going to be around then either.
Well, we're not, we're getting off topic. The council directed you to come up with some ideas and concepts and you've done that and that's what we need to cover. So we don't need to be talking about punting the cannon down the road. The council has already asked you to do this and you're doing what the council asked.
Correct.
So let's cover the building that you have and the presented, the costs, and then see what the council wants to do. Tom?
My mind was blinking. I was looking at the sprawl we've got on the other piece of property and didn't understand why we couldn't move that building in to the existing property even if we had tweaked pond a little bit or something. But since we can tile that together with the road, that would be acceptable. And then there would still be property there. We could expand the maintenance building if we needed to at some point, way on down the road. I don't see that happening in the near future, but there's an opportunity there. That way, we've got it all on site, so. But would we have to fence that other property? And that's north of Pods there, isn't it?
It's, yeah, it's north of Pods.
So we'd have, we would have to fence that or is that already fenced?
You don't have to fence it. You can if you want to.
We would most likely want to close that in, or at least I would at some point.
What, if it was up to me, I'd fence it along 61st Street and move the current lockable gate from where it is north and.
But I'm sitting there looking at that retention pond that we got sitting out there. It's lost opportunity for land and we're getting ready to put drainage in on 61st Street someday. We ought to look at tying that into it.
Can't do it. The elevation is too high north. You can't get it there unless you put a pump. Now, if you put a pump there, you could pump it in.
I'm just looking at trying to do something with that lot, look ahead, so I'm okay.
Okay. George?
Yeah, I like the fact that we have an offer, 98, and it's been appraised for 100. I like that idea. If we look down the road, we're gonna have to invest in something as far as expanding and what we have now, it's not working. I just like this idea. I like the fact that we can move on this and we have an offer and for us to kind of, Jack, how long would it take us to have this new building built if we decide to go this route and sell the owner?
I'd say on the outside, six months.
Okay, thank you.
I'd have to get with the contractor, but I had preliminary discussions and maybe six months.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. George?
Did I miss it or is there a lift going to be in there for the cars? Yes, that's the extra, if you go back to my little spreadsheet. It's $15,000 for the lift. Okay. Well, that would have to be in there. Yes. Is that or? Yeah. That's added into the total. Okay. On the spreadsheet.
Okay. Ben?
Sorry, as far as parking or anything like that goes, would that be something that we need to address? It's looking like the, or is that parking lot part of what he's giving us?
No, the parking lot is not. That's part of TWX.
So we would be needing a parking area?
To the east that he's given us. That's all vacant property.
Can you just go back to the photo?
Sure.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't, doesn't mean I get to point to my screen.
It's about an acre and a quarter.
I mean, it's exactly right.
This is gonna be.
This will be given to us.
Okay, so we would need.
And that would be where the building would.
So we would need to include some sort of parking? Or is that already included in your price for, that you bid?
Parking?
Parking, is that already included in your price for bid or?
Employee parking, we might have to put some gravel down or something. Most of them are going to be parking over at the other building unless they're being worked on. And the police cars are gonna be here and gonna have to be driven over there.
Thank you.
So I don't picture a big parking lot or anything that would be needed other than the current employees that work there.
John?
I can't remember what I was thinking then. So access will be on the east side, correct? Access to our drive, our entry drive? Your bays and stuff, your bay doors will be on the east side of the building?
Correct.
Basin east.
You take advantage of the gravel road.
Got you. That's great. And will there be more of a concrete approach included in this or just something?
At least 10-foot in front of every door.
That looks well thought out to me. I, I'm supportive. I'm not crazy about taking on more debt. But I think that's something we can probably discuss on how we're gonna do that if we're gonna use half of it off reserves and half of it off of the GO or GO bonds. But I'm open to it.
Yeah, I'm definitely, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. I think we just, if we want to do it, we just write a check and be done with it. I don't think there's a need to string it out over a 15-year note and try to include that when, you know, basically the trade-off would be we sold the old building for 350 and we take 200 and we throw it towards a new facility. Why borrow it when we have the cash? It doesn't make sense when we have cash on hand to go borrow more money.
Randy?
I was just gonna say, I like this idea Jack thinks, or bringing it back to us. I like the idea of all of them being down in one, one location. It's a central location. So I'd like to do what we need to do to move forward on this.
I think this is a great, would be a great idea. I mean, it's one of the things we talked about in this current City Hall, is getting everybody on one roof. The building that we're currently in, we moved the police department out for a reason. It's piece crap. It's, we're outgrowing it. Let me reword that. We're outgrowing it and it's landlocked where it is. We can't expand on that piece of property because of basically the CCUA and what's surrounding that. And, I mean, we have another agenda item to look at on offer. But I would say we move forward with the lowest bid on Lou Rebelli and we start working together and put together contracts, come back to the council to approve getting this structure built and just work through the process of the land donation. I just think it's a win-win for the city. It grows our property that we have, that we could use in the future as well too. I can't see where we'd go wrong on this.
Mr. Mayor, if the, if the council moves forward with this, I'll come back with the cost of the fencing and moving the gate as well. Does everybody think if we do that, that that makes sense? Move the gate to one point?
Oh, absolutely, it makes sense.
Ben?
So I'd make a motion to go ahead and move forward here with what's been presented as far as the option for building and accepting the lowest bid.
George?
I'll second that.
Okay. When, when would we need to make a decision as a council on financing? Because we need, we need to get back with ransom if any portion wants to be financed.
I would say the latest next council meeting.
Okay.
Because those statement of final cost need to be, there's a public hearing. So I believe before the end of the month, if you'd like to finance it.
So I know we have a motion and a second on this. I would like to hear a discussion from the council on where we stand on financing. Is it an all or nothing, you know, finance $100,000, we spend $100,000? I'd like to hear some discussion about that because that's gonna impact our next meeting, what we want to do.
John?
I agree with what you're saying and I felt like we sold the building over here. That would, we lost that asset and this would bring us in another one that's gonna actually take us 20 years out, which the building that we vacated here wouldn't. So in addition to selling the old council hall, city council, city hall and the maintenance shop, this will pay for it. Am I correct? Am I close? I remember the numbers on what we sold that for.
We just have to remember, so we sold the tower as well. And then we also, so we pulled 150 out for that for next year for some projects. But yes, there's still the 350 that we, that we got from the, or 300. Let me make sure I get that number right.
290.
290. By the time we got realtor fees out of that. So yeah, there would be enough in there to do it and still grow the account.
I just hate to see us pay interest on something where we have money in the bank and we're making less interest, so really we're in the negative, truthfully, by doing that. Depending on how many years we do it, if it's 15-year or 20-year note, we're gonna pay more money, borrow one than we would if we have cash on hand. I, my preference would be definitely not finance the entire amount, but my first preference would be pay cash for it.
Jim? George?
I don't like to borrow money. If we got the cash on hand, let's pay for it.
Okay. Jim?
I'm in the same position. If we got the cash, and it sounds like we do, there's good logic to that. We shouldn't be financing in a city of our size, should be able to write the check and be done with it.
Ben?
I agree.
Tom?
I agree too unless we're gonna hedge on interest rates going up. So I, there's no, first of all, says they're going to, so we might as well pay for it.
Okay. George?
I agree with that as well. We have the money. Let's go ahead and use that.
Randy?
I agree. Danielle, can you remind me, what's the balance of that fund right now?
I'd say one six, about a million six.
Oh, okay.
And I would like to add that over the last three years, we really have been trying to pay down debt. And we were about 25, 26 million. We're at about 22 million. And I really would like to see that continue to be paid down without taking big, large projects. I know we have a sewer project, or CCUA project that may be coming in the next couple of years. So I'd recommend you pay cash.
Okay. Ben?
Sure. So would I be able to amend my original motion there? And I'd like to amend the original motion and include in there that we would pay for it out of the MTBE money.
Okay. Who, George, who seconded that?
I did.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. So you got a motion, second to go forward with Lou Rebelli and that any, any project we do, we're gonna end up paying cash for. So not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is discuss the sale of the maintenance shop. So as you know, we do have a buyer that offered $98,000. The one great thing here is there's no realtor involved. That contract came directly to us. We don't have it posted with anybody. So it's $98,000.
There's one issue. Doug reviewed it. They want us to pay attorney fees, is that right?
No, it's just a, it's a standard provision that's put in there that if there's a dispute, the prevailing party gets attorney fees from the losing party. And I just think as a matter of course, we don't agree to that. I think when, when both parties realize that if they're gonna go to court, they have to pay their own attorney fees, I think my theory is that discourages litigation about matters and encourages compromise and resolution of matters. So that was the only change. Otherwise, it was a very standard real estate purchase contract.
Jack, do you have anything you want to add to it?
No, I can go ahead if council wishes and let the guy with the $98,000 bid tell him it's been approved and he'll sign the paperwork to.
Approved on the correction and the language of the attorney.
Great. And also giving us enough time to build another building. That's gotta be part of it.
Absolutely.
Maybe he'll use a part of it that we're not using and then kind of a share deal. I don't know if that's gonna be anything tricky from a legal standpoint, but.
Okay. Jim?
Mike, I'm just gonna jump in and make the motion that we approve the sale of this 98, of the maintenance shop for the $98,000 offer at hand with Doug's revisions.
Okay. And would you say that the contract also gives us seven months to occupy that space while we're under construction for our new facility?
Yes.
Okay. George?
I'll second that.
John, did you have anything?
I was gonna second as well, but also I was gonna ask the same question you answered before that, but it's timeframe. I mean, just knowing how construction works and some of the times there's delays and stuff, I just don't want us to be in a position to where we have no shop for a little while. Could we maybe put something in there that if our construction goes further, that we maybe rent it from them?
Yeah.
For a period of 90 days or something like that? How about, how about if we just had an option to rent for 90 days beyond that date?
That's what I'm thinking.
Just an option.
So you're adjusting your motion to include that. And George?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Obviously someone's gonna need to come up with a price.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a good idea to do that, but then also if we figure we get a closing date sixty, ninety days out.
Early.
It, it would uh benefit us as well too. Tom?
How many months did you say out?
Seven. Cause I was looking.
Typically it's six.
Yeah, I was looking for a little buffer, I wanted a little buffer.
Well, if we're gonna put this ninety day stipulation on it, I'm wondering if we want to go that far. I mean, I don't know.
Well, that was a, that was where we'd lease it back, but if they do a seven month.
So what happens if we get out early, he gets it?
Yeah.
Yeah, he just gets it early.
So seven months.
And we're done, we just, yeah. And I know the gentleman's trying to buy the building, so I'm gonna abstain from this vote.
You, you don't need to.
I have no interest in it at all, other than I know the company and stuff.
All right.
You don't look at it as a.
That likely will be an affirmative vote because you're not declaring a conflict.
I, I know we have no conflict at all, but.
Not just knowing somebody.
Okay, okay.
All right, so we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstain? And that motion passes eight zero. That's everything on the agenda tonight, so we'll move on to governing body reports and we'll start with Jim.
We have nothing to report tonight.
Randy?
I have nothing tonight.
George? Tom?
Uh, Park Department's having a rededication on the building on Fifty-third Street on the twentieth, uh, I forgot the times, I think it's like one-thirty to three, if anybody's interested in going. Uh, last Saturday at the SCAC meeting, uh, they set up a group to look at what SCAC needs to look like in the future or whether it's gonna exist at all. So that group will, I tentatively will be meeting in Bella, I think, so uh, wanted to remind everybody that REAP offer, or WSU's offering training and that training is free in a lot of cases to REAP members. Uh, so if you might wanna watch training, if there's any coming up you might be interested in, we don't have to pay for it, I mean, they usually charge like seventy-five dollars a class, since we belong to REAP, we don't have to pay that.
I think that meeting was gonna be at the law enforcement center, wasn't it?
The next meeting's gonna be at the law enforcement center, but the people that are looking, the group that's looking at what SCAC's gonna happen or what we're gonna do.
I apologize.
Okay, um, I had somebody get pretty vocal with me this morning about the water district fees in Ward One and I mentioned it to the mayor and he suggested that maybe we pull a group together to look at that. Um, I'm open to that and can we put that as an agenda item this time?
Yeah, so in the next council meeting, let's just have a uh, get a, a subcommittee of three council members together uh to look at the uh, those, those rural water district fees in Ward, in Ward One.
There has been some changes over the last couple of years, uh, nothing favorable, but uh other cities are doing different things rather than ongoing percentage, so we might wanna look into some of that.
Okay, can?
Can we have like the original agreement?
Yeah.
With that?
Yeah.
So we see what it says, because if I remember, it's pretty clear.
The whole paragraph?
Pretty clear what we agreed to.
So can we put that, our agreement with rural water district in the packet for that as well? We can do that, yeah.
I'd like to know too.
Okay. Are you good, Tom?
No.
I have nothing.
Ben?
This Saturday at uh, on the Sixty-first Street is the Eats and Beats by Park, uh, the Park City Pride Group, so it's at five o'clock, invite everyone to come on out, it'll be a good time there at five o'clock this Saturday. Eats and beats, several food trucks out there, so bring your money, bring your dancing shoes and it'll be a good time.
George?
Yeah, our newest business, Family Dollars, now in Park City, we'd like to encourage everyone to support our local businesses, um, had a chance to visit with them over the weekend. Nice looking store inside, so we appreciate the support. Also, uh, in lieu of the hurricane that's getting ready to hit the southeast coast, we wanna keep all the residents in our thoughts and prayers, thank you.
John?
I have nothing. Uh, would make a motion to adjourn.
And Ben?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero.